September, Monday, eighteenth, Village Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing we're going to do is...
I'll second you.
Seth, I don't, yeah, thank you. The minutes from our last meeting, everyone had a chance to review those. Everyone good? Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll second it.
I wasn't there.
No.
Oh.
I missed it.
I was there.
August seventh.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I was babysitting.
We are going, so, Mr. Bennett, are you here for, which ones are you here for?
I'm here for R.F.A.C.F.L.L.C. Warren and I are here for that. That's, I think it's effectively number one because Hedy Creek is adjourned. But we're also here for the next one. I am for Woodhill. I'm going to ask if that be adjourned until November.
Okay.
November for Hill Street.
Yep. We're going to save Fowler Farm for last, so I'm going to do new business first and then, just, just because I think it'll go faster that way.
Your request is for adjournment to November?
On, not on Fowler, on...
Woodhill.
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 That is a letter N in.
Yeah. Okay.
It may very well end up getting withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. First on the list is Hedy Creek, which is withdrawn, so we've got a record of that. On the new business front, seven eighty-three Hill Street, we want to adjourn that one, correct? Right, we're going to adjourn that.
That's just the one. I asked for November twentieth.
November twentieth, we'll adjourn that to November twentieth. Then we have six forty-nine Hill Street. Anyone here to speak on?
Do you want to do a resolution to accept the request for the adjournment?
Yes. Yeah.
I'll make a motion for Woodhill, for seven eighty-three. We will mutually agree to adjourn that till November's X. What date is it?
Twenty.
Twenty, two zero?
Yes.
Thanksgiving meeting? Does that need to be voted on? Yeah. That's your motion?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
These timeframes, Kelly, we have to mutually agree to terminate.
Right. Six forty-nine Hill Street.
This is, Kathy said it to me this afternoon, this is fresh.
Yeah, this is fresh, and I don't see the applicant here. Do we want to wait and possibly give the person a little more time, or do you want to talk about it?
Let's, let's give it some time, right, let's, we'll rev, if they show up, we'll revisit this.
Subdivision of a smaller lot on the rear with a flagpole lot squeezed down that north side, of which there's some on Hill Street. And some of you might, I might want to go look at it, let me tell you, there would be neighbors afflicted. It's of interest larger than just, okay, for the community, a neighbor, immediate neighborhood.
All right. The White Street and Windmill Lane. Is someone here to talk about that?
I am.
Thank you.
Twenty-two, yep.
So this is on seventy-four White Street?
No, no, twenty-two Windmill Lane.
This is White Street.
Twenty-two Windmill Lane.
Twenty-two Windmill Lane.
Oh, yeah.
Is that what?
Is that twenty-two Windmill Lane, Chairman? Do you want that, that one, that was the old Rogers' house, that's the abandoned house next to the bicycle store?
No, I was, no, I wanted to do the White Street and Windmill Lane first.
It's the mayor's.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, no one here for that one either.
White Street.
Yeah, we're going to, so we'll push...
He may be coming on the table.
Okay, we'll revisit that, so let's, let's go ahead and do twenty-two Windmill Lane, sorry.
Can I request, if we just go a little slower, because we're jumping so quickly, I'm trying to just catch up.
Okay.
We're looking for a trend.
This guy.
So there's somebody online for seventy-four?
Well, I'm not sure.
What's the name?
T. Kessler and, um, that, Alan.
Uh, Dr. Allen is here for seventy-four. And Ryan, is that twenty-two Windmill?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe he's attending the zoom.
So let's go ahead and do twenty-two, please.
Twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm here for seventy-four White Street.
Yes, thank you, we'll, we'll come back to you right after this.
Sure, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
This is it?
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Vincent Guardiello. I'm an engineer and principal with the Reiner Group. We have been retained by the owners here as the surveyors and civil engineers for the project. This is my first time appearing on behalf of the applicant. I believe there was a prior submission done, which resulted in some comments from Nelson and Pope back in April of 2023. The drawings that we have prepared here and along with the architectural drawings, the intent with that submission was in essence to address the comments from a complete standpoint. To give you some background on the site, there's a very dilapidated building on the property, been here for quite a while. The intent with the development on this redevelopment is to refurbish that building as well as expand upon it with office and non-medical office use. Just to kind of give you some background on the site with respect to some of the civil engineering challenges, ground water is very close to grade, it's probably less than two feet. The intent here is to propose one of the new IA systems here, in which we are proposing a leaching field, which is shown in this area of the site towards the front. There is a slightly raised landscape wall, I think the max is about eighteen inches. There are a few elements to this design, which obviously will need to be reviewed by your planning consultants and engineers. And obviously, once those comments come back, it would be our intent to address them. Just to kind of get into some more detail of what we're doing here, the intent of what we've submitted was to address these prior comments for completeness. We are proposing pervious asphalt in this portion of the site with respect to the A-on-site parking spaces that we're providing. We are using Coltech infiltrator units towards the rear of the site. Again, getting away from your typical standard precast concrete, which due to the groundwater condition here, really doesn't provide ample space to do that. So we're trying to use some environmental techniques that in essence tries to address stormwater runoff and the impacts of the high-ground water table. As far as the building design, the architect is on the, attending the meeting this evening via Zoom. So should there be any comments or any, you know, I should say, initial comments by this board that you would like to ask of us, he's there to answer that. You know, other than what we have on the application or what we're showing on the plan, should the board have any, I guess, initial questions of me, I'd gladly like to respond to that.
Thank you. Alex, or Kathy, do you want to respond to the technical aspects before the board asks any questions?
So there were a couple of questions that we had as far as even just the, the plan for the architect. The, the date prepared was from September of 2022, the copy of the plan that we received.
So I'm not sure if it was the most recent, so maybe that's a question for Ryan, the architect. And then the other comment was how the parking calculations were, you know, to justify the parking calculations and show that. Those are the biggies, there's still, you know, we're still really kind of sinking our teeth into this and trying to figure out how this works in the context of the parking for the municipal, you know, parking lot in the rear, so.
There is a section of the code that speaks on the subject of parking relief. I believe it's on our drawing C-two. And though I am not thoroughly familiar with that, we have interpreted to be that based on what our conditions are, our total parking required is twelve spaces. And then per section one sixteen fourteen C, and talks about what those requirements are, and that's how we came up with the nine spaces that are required. We've indicated that there are nine existing spaces on the site. And then pursuant to section one sixteen fourteen K, based upon, I guess, medical, that there is a provision that would allow us, because of, I guess, some type of tax record, to only need to provide sixty percent. I don't, I don't claim that to be fully under, fully documented or, or comprehended to the code. You know, if, if, if they're, I'm interpreting incorrectly, or I've got, I'm not slighted in the least.
Well, after you're with the building inspector, but I think it's also... Deducting the existing building there as if there's an existing medical office on the facility? I think the parking that your grandfathered in, for lack of a better term, is going to be based on what the existing use is there. So if that's a residential use, you get credit for what's there, not as if it's the medical use.
So what's getting grandfathered is the, the previous use and not the proposed use. Is that fair to say?
I'm going to confirm that with the building inspector, but that's my understanding of the code.
That's, I appreciate that. And again, Ryan, he was very involved with those calculations as well, so both of he and I, and a determination from the building inspector, some form of confirmation. We could definitely sit down and prefer that out that. Our, you know, our intention here, it's a very complicated arrangement with respect to where the parking is and that driveway between the buildings. You know, our intention really is to not reduce any of the existing parking that is currently in that area. I think parking is, is a little bit of a question mark from the standpoint that it's public parking, but it seems to us that a lot of those businesses that are in this area don't have onsite parking and really rely on the municipal parking. And again, I'm not looking to point the finger at our neighbors here, we're just trying to provide as much onsite parking as we possibly can. Once that is determined per code, you know, we will look to achieve that or meet that to the best of our ability.
And just a question about Health Department, any input from the Health Department?
Well, we've spent a fair amount of time at the Health Department already, and that's why we are at a point now with our arrangement. We've vetted this design with respect to the infiltration rates of these units. We discussed a little bit about the groundwater situation and how we handle that. So based upon where we are, that's, that's the comments that we have had. I don't know, I did not provide you with our most, the latest comments from the Health Department from a standpoint of what they find to be outstanding at this time, but I'm glad we share those with you.
Did the Health Department ask about the groundwater conditions as far as the test hole having been done in May?
They, yeah, they, they, we've had some test hole back and forth with them. There, we spent a fair amount of time interpolating what highest expected groundwater is. There is a monitoring well that's up close proximity to further north and a little bit east of us by about two thousand feet. And they had a groundwater reading there that was significantly high and asked us to address it relative to the site.
Okay.
We, we have not modeled groundwater between here and Lake Agawam, but the reality of is, if, if they're telling me the highest expected should be used based upon that test well, the whole village would be underwater.
Yep.
So, you know, I...
That's probably true.
What's that?
That's probably true.
But, but what I'm getting at is, you know, where, where the lake begins, you'd see four feet of water there. So there is some hydraulic gradient here that one can just not interpolate what the highest expected is there down to this site, without any significant modeling, I would say.
Good, thank you.
Good, that's, that's, that's what I had initially, yes, thanks.
One of the things we should mention, and I think we talked about this last time we were here, if you look at that easternmost parking space, the one you're providing onsite?
Yes.
I think it's on this one, yes. There's, there's grass behind there that's shown, and then there's village parking behind that. So this parking layout doesn't, it's not feasible, just based on the way the village parking layout is. The current survey doesn't delineate where the edges of the village parking lot are. So we would really need to understand how this is going to integrate into the, the parking area around it.
And I have a, we did an aerial overlay. If that would be helpful to, to, to look at, here you go.
We can, we can certainly do that.
You want that, then, just, the first page is the architectural plan, the second one is your C-one, and then C-two, C-three?
Yeah.
This was an old plan. This, this is not our plan.
Go to the next page, I'm sorry, that was, so that's the one that we have, that's why we were asking about the architect's plans. I don't have the most recent set from the architect, the one that I have are from September of 2022. So that answers that first question, actually, then.
If you look in the comments and revisions on the right-hand title block, it should say revision, revised for Planning Board, eight thirty twenty-three?
Okay.
I, I believe in order to tie in and make this work, we could slide our parking further west a little bit to try to not create that conflict that you're identifying in this photograph.
Gotcha. And then at the end of the, the property, what, what is this space here? Is that marked on the plan?
Yeah, that's strictly drainage, drainage, like the landscape area, grass.
Oh, in the west?
Yeah, due to, due to the drainage structures that we're proposing, they're not traffic bearing because of the, we can't get the cover over it. So in essence, it would be a landscape or, you know, some type of a, an area that would not be traffic loaded. And as far as what we do in that area, landscaping, et cetera, I don't know. Ryan, did we provide a landscape plan for the entire site?
Uh, no, we did not at this, at this time.
Which is one of the items that I guess is...
Needed. Because I think right now that area is paved.
It is. And there is a, there is an easement over that area as far as some type of passage or stuff like that, I believe. Well, actually, it's not on our property, it comes up to our property.
Right.
But there's no restriction, no, that's, what's, what I believe with respect to the easement that is nor, north of us, I believe that easement really allows us to pass and repass over the neighboring property to the north, which we really don't do right now. In fact, this is where rotations is, and that's where bicycles are stored and stuff along those lines. So I mean, you're really not driving vehicles over our property through their property and, and vice versa.
So is there, um, do you have a copy of the, the survey and the deeds and the easements and so forth that this board could look at?
For, for our parcel, we do, I'm not certain about the neighbor, but I'm sure we can provide you with a copy if we do.
Okay.
I think that area in the back is where the refuse enclosures are now, are those proposed to move somewhere else?
Um, well, the, the sanitary is here, right? Oh, you mean, you mean the...
I think that there's like dumpsters back there right now.
Dumpsters and stuff like that.
Yeah, that was my question, going to be garbage collection, and if it's medical waste, is that required to have any kind of special provisions or?
That, that would be stored inside?
Okay.
And as far as how disposal goes, so we provide an existing conditions map, and really what we, what we're showing there is a paved area with some, the utility pole that is still to remain on our proposed plan, but there's no evidence or documentation that there are any enclosures within that limit. Again, you know, as far as the occupancy of the building and the use on the site, it's been somewhat dormant for many years, so it's not, you know, it's not like we've been, people throwing garbage in a dumpster enclosure and stuff, and we need to address it, but it's...
I, I don't, I don't know if those dumpsters even belong to us, to be honest with you, they, they might be, I don't think they belong to us at all.
So you're not proposing any area for dumpsters?
Well, I think it's, as of right now, there's no exterior storage out there. I think that's something that we'll need to address, whether we can do it within the footprint of the building, but obviously, we're going to need to provide some form of, of disposal.
And where the IA systems are shown on here, the IA system?
Right in the parking area, so... If you go to this drawing, C-three.
C-three.
And are they, are they above ground? It's going to be above ground?
No, they're, everything's public area.
Okay.
So the, uh, the uti, uh, the utility, I'm sorry, the, um, the electric lines, would they be rem, would they be, be put underground as well?
Well, the ones that service our building, we certainly can. I, I don't know whether the, what the overhead wires that we're showing there are primary or secondary. They may serve other facilities or other, other, you know, buildings in the area. Obviously, that one overhead line would likely, I guess not, it's not in conflict with our building, but still, I would, I mean, if that's, we can look into what's secondary and what's primary.
So if, this isn't being proposed as group practice offices, I, because it has, they have individual bathrooms, there are a lot, a lot of bathrooms, but...
Yeah, there's, a portion of the offices are medical.
Yeah.
And a portion are non-medical.
Okay.
So that really is in line with our sanitary flow for the site, I mean, what the requirements are of the Health Department. So again, there'll be certain units that would be permitted to have medical offices and certain professional offices.
Because Kathy, I was wondering if you have...
And other boys has always picked up separately as well, it's not, it's not thrown in a dumpster, it's a separate company that comes by and picks it up.
Do you know if there's separate IA requirements, if you have, you know, six bathrooms in a facility as opposed to, you know, shared?
I would defer to the Health Department, I think it's safer to do that, I mean, we look at basic setbacks and so forth, um, yeah.
It's, it's not, it all, all falls within one tax map.
Right. Okay, they, they do their design flow and they're...
Design flow, I mean, you know, as far as, you know, sanitary design, I mean, you can separate it if it's not a requirement.
So, um, so on the plans, I noticed you had three hundred and twelve gallons per day as the proposed design flow, is that being changed now because you have less?
No.
Or you're going, you're going with three twelve?
What we're proposing right now is what we're proposing.
Okay, all right. So that's just slightly over what is permitted for that property?
There is a grandfathered flow associated with this. But in reality, even if you're grandfathered in a certain flow, you must provide the hydraulic capacity for what you're proposing.
Right.
So regardless of what our flow is there, what we can fit on our site as far as a hydraulic flow for our sanitary system, in essence, that's what is going to accommodate the uses and what permit the uses in the, in the space.
So I'm, the reason I'm asking is because the Lake Agawam management plan says that you shouldn't increase the density over what's permitted. So if you do have that record of grandfathered, that would be useful for this board to have.
And what was that study? Excuse me, that study?
It is the, I have it written down.
Lake Agawam?
It is the comprehensive management plan for Lake Agawam. And I can get you a copy if you, if you like, I can send that to you.
Can I ask the nature of the medical offices? Do we know, is there a certain medical?
Private practice, basically, you know, if you're a surgeon over here at the, at the hospital, and you know, you want to have your own office or something, that's, that's the intent there.
And so lab isn't an issue, like they may be taking blood or whatever, but it's not, nothing on site in terms of medical lab?
No, that's... No, there's... Yeah, you're not going there because you really have COVID or, you know, you, you got a sore throat or something like that, no. It, it would be more of a professional doctor's office to assist in their practice with the proximity of the hospital and stuff, the applicant feels that there is a demand for that type of space.
And just for my edification, when they're, when it's a public kind of thing like that, is there greater parking, you know, requirements because the public will be visiting these offices?
Well, again, I think the intent is really not for the public to come and visit, it'd be more of a, a, you know, a doctor who needs an office. And, you know, instead of working out of his house, he's going to have his own office here in this building.
But the, the parking calculations would be based on square footage for medical office?
Okay.
Those are just, um, we had tried to overlay the plans onto an aerial, they're not perfect. I, I, I would almost prefer it come from the, from the engineer to see how this, it's really to see how this site works with the surrounding area. But we just did, you know, obviously, it's, it's hard to read still because we're, we don't have the AutoCAD, we just have, you know, a paper copy that we scanned and overlaid on an aerial. So that would be something that would be helpful to have. Um, thank you.
So what we'll do is we'll provide you with our alignment plan with a, an aerial underneath it.
Yeah, that'd be great. And actually, if you could do the existing conditions too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Alex, you'll coordinate with Tian about the parking requirement, if that's grandfathered pre-existing or not? Yeah, that's right, and that's also going to depend on how many parking spaces are there, um, existing, so it'll be important to have the existing conditions. Um, and then what the building's last documented certificate of, of occupancy is.
Yeah.
I should mention, if this, if the site plan is in conflict with the village parking area, if there's a, if it makes sense to remove two village parking spaces, if that results in a net gain in overall parking, that's something that we could potentially take to the trustees.
We, we figured as much, you know, I, we just figured we come in, we get the comments, and then we would see what our ability is to, as far as what we potentially could do offsite, that would better, uh, provide onsite parking as well.
Right, I'm, I'm just thinking that back of a parcel now that's currently all paved, but can't really be used for parking right now, maybe there's a way to reconfigure this in conjunction with the village lot.
That, right, and, and use it separate, change an aisle and, and see if you could do that.
Yeah, that could potentially be a, be a net gain.
Okay.
Good, any other questions, board members, questions? Kathy, Alex, all good? John, good, okay, anything else?
I just have one question then, so you'll release your comments. I, I would presume that we could get a copy of them, and based on what our discussion here is today, those comments plus this possibly meet with the building inspector and yourself, Alex, to just kind of hash down some of those code things, then we would make a resumé.
Correct.
Wonderful.
I do have one more question, there, there seems to be a courtyard or a deck or both.
That, that one's old.
That's old, okay.
That's where we have the old architectural, that first page is the architects.
Okay, so sorry. So there's no courtyard in, in the plan or deck or common area, right, next to the building?
The deck, the deck, is that, is that grade though, over the IA system, leaching field?
This drawing says deck, yes.
I don't believe there's those decks, yes, that's over the leaching field.
Yeah.
That is suspended over the drainage structures. And again, if there's details required of that design, obviously, we will provide them to you.
Well, the drawing says deck, and I assume it's a deck that's not a grade.
Well, the drawing says deck, and I assume it's a deck that's not a grade.
Those decks.
I thought at some point there was some deck with seating, proposed seating outside.
There was.
There was, but is that gone now?
Yeah, no, it looks like it.
That's that courtyard that we...
Yeah, that's what shows up on this first pa- first page, but that's the old version, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Are we adjourning to a date certain or?
Um, well, I'd like, um, I would say, I know you guys meet first and third, but the likelihood we'd be ready for the first Monday is probably slim to none.
Right. So, and actually, yeah, it would be good to, for us to be able to look at them as, so I would say this, the second meeting should work.
Yes, okay.
And then, uh, because I expect we'll have, we'll have something out this week.
Okay.
And, um, maybe even some preliminary engineering questions, um, so.
Good, thank you.
So we're looking at October, what's the date?
Sixteenth is the, the third Monday?
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah. So do you, it's an adjournment for all purposes to...
Oct- uh, so, uh, you listen to adjourn until October sixteenth, please.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time.
You.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Oh, good, okay. Um, seventy-four White Street, right?
Yes.
That's Dr. Alom, right?
So just for the board's edification before we start, this is a site plan review. Um, it's a rather small project. It involves the, the refig- reconfiguration of an existing structure into two dwelling units. Under both New York State law and the village law, the planning board is empowered to review site plans. Information and factors that we can consider are things such as landscaping, means of access and parking, and overall, the general health, safety and welfare of occupants of the projected structures and of people in the general neighborhood.
Great, thank you. If, if you're not familiar with this, this is a medical office house that was built turn of the century, I believe, that they're looking to convert to a, um, to a family home, right?
Okay, yes, that's correct. This is a, a special exception use, and it was recently approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So its next step is to come to the planning board to seek a site plan approval for the site layout.
Okay, alright. Is the applicant going to speak? He's there?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you so much. I don't know if I need to say anything or no. I believe Alex is familiar with the projects and the engineer designed it, and, uh, the, the structure used to be a two-family house all through its history. And then I believe in the eighties, the owner at the time cheated into an office space. And now I just retired, and I'm gonna change it to a two-family house again, or two dwellings, uh, to help, for a year-round rent, to help with the traffic and, uh, and, um, just put it to use rather than, you know, keeping it closed.
Kathy?
So, um, so you can see the, the plan. Um, there are, uh, there's an entrance to this site, both on Windmill Lane and White Street. And there's parking, uh, on the, what would that be, south side of the house as well as the west side of the house slash office? I'm calling it a house already. Uh, so there's quite a bit of parking, which you don't need anymore as soon as it becomes a two-family house. And we, uh, Alex, we've, we've been speaking about this, and it makes much more sense to convert some of that paved area to lawn area for usable, usable yard space. Um, but the other thing is that it doesn't make sense for this property to have two, um, driveways, two curb cuts. Um, so, um, the, the, the request of the applicant is to consider, I guess, the best curb cut to close, and which would provide the most usable space, and considering the traffic and so forth on, um, on both of these streets, so.
That should be no problem, you know? Uh, probably the one on, on White Street would be safer to get in and out without having to go through the traffic of the Windmill Lane itself.
Okay, so I guess we'd want the, the, your, your consultant to explore, you know, what kind of usable yard space you could fit in, um, and, you know, what area of pavement would be removed, and how would you close the curb cut onto Windmill Lane, um, and so forth, so.
And a landscape plan.
Oh, and, yeah, so there is parts of this, right? You're gonna be taking up pavement. You should, uh, be looking at, uh, how that would be done and, and what kind of plantings you would put in. And, um, also, you know, during construction, as you remove pavement, you have to make sure that you don't impact the local streets, uh, during a rainstorm, so you wanna make sure that there's no, um, you know, runoff. Um, so there, there's things that have to be considered. Am I missing anything, Alex, or?
And if there's any existing draining structures that might have to be decommissioned as part of that, that parking?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
I think as part of the, um, two-family use, only four parking spaces would be required, so we'd wanna see where the, at, at least those number are, um, and where it makes sense to, to put those. Um, you may wanna consider fencing in part of the area as a rear yard that's gonna be landscaped so that it could be usable by, uh, the, uh, by the tenants of this space.
That's fine.
Um, health department-wise, um, there's a existing sanitary system on this. Um, do you know where that's located?
Uh, I believe it's in the map. It's behind the house.
Okay. So I'm sure that...
It, it will be on the north side of the house.
North side of the house, okay.
On the, that's the White Street sign?
Yes.
Well, that is something else to be considered because the, the health department may open this up for, you know, looking at a, um, an improved sanitary system as well, so.
Any, uh, any other questions, comments, board members? Alright, so the applicant here will, uh, resubmit, uh, a sketch plan that addresses those comments. And we can adjourn this, right, to, Dr. Alom, when would you like to come back?
Um, will, will I be receiving an email with instruction about what needs to be done?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes, yes, we can do that. And the other thing is, um, you know, you don't necessarily have to come back with a fully engineered, um, site plan. Um, your representative can come and, you know, say, okay, what about this or this, you know, to kind of explore what options there are, are out there, if there is more than one option that, that is, that, that your, uh, your engineer feels is best. So, you know, there might be, there might be some choices.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. Just, uh, once I get the email, I'm gonna start moving forward with it.
Okay.
And, uh, see what needs to be done.
And Dr.?
Yep.
Dr. Alom, just a side, um, note, it might be worth it, if you have not done so already, or your engineer, to explore what the health department will want in terms of septic, because if you need to upgrade or move the septic system, that might cause other elements of the property or the site plan to move or need to be reconfigured.
Okay, I, well, I, I believe he explored it. Um, I'm not an engineer, and he said that what you have is adequate, but I'm gonna, uh, have him, um, uh, document whatever's in there and, uh, and whatever the need are.
Excellent.
If it needs any, you know?
So that, that's a pretty good to-do list, so I'm gonna propose that we adjourn this to the November sixth meeting. Dr. Alom, is that okay?
That would be fine. I believe that would give me ample time to move forward with it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn this to November sixth, please. Also move, Chairman? Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anyone here. What are we doing for six forty-nine Hill Street? Are we gonna talk about that tonight?
It's on the, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, but we don't have a applicant representative.
I think, I think this board can talk about it, though.
Why don't you give us a quick briefing on this one?
Okay, so this is a proposed two-lot subdivision on Hill Street, six forty-nine Hill Street. The front lot is, um, forty thousand square feet and meets zoning, as far as we can tell, as far as setbacks and everything. We haven't gotten into that level of detail. But the proposal is to create a flag lot that goes to the rear of the property. And, um, that lot is twenty thousand eighty-four square feet. Um, a flag lot under village code needs to, if it's in the R twenty district as this is showing, as if they, as if the whole lot in the back is R twenty, would have to be at least thirty thousand square feet. Um, however, and I prepared a report, um, the property in the back actually is split-zoned between R twenty and R forty, so it would either require thirty thousand square feet as a flag lot or sixty thousand square feet as a, in the R, uh, forty district. So, um, and, uh, given that the...
Sorry, Kathy, to interrupt, the majority of that back is R forty.
Yes.
Yes, yes, not R twenty.
Yes, so, um, page three of the memo?
Yeah.
See the little yellow, uh, part here? That's R twenty. So it's a smaller bit of the property that's within the R twenty. So it would need to be much closer to the sixty thousand square foot minimum. And they'd also have to, um, exclude the portion that's the flag pole from the area calculation as well. So that's it in a nutshell. The, the back, um, lot is, uh, really very far away from meeting zoning.
And also, we, we should have mentioned... Yes, and there's, as you know, there's guidance in the comprehensive plan about using flag lots to create undersized lots by, uh, a subdivision.
And in any event, the project is proposed, it would require variances from the zoning board of appeals before it would either come before us or return to us.
Any reaction, board members?
So just, just, um, again, from the, the sketch plan, the phase of a subdivision, this board, uh, has the, can disapprove, approve, or approve with modifications, I think, the way it's written. And so to disapprove, um, you don't need a, you really don't need to do the SEACRA on it. You don't need to, you could just, you know, there's enough basis to dis- disapprove an application. You can do so. Um, if this board is amenable to approving this application, on the other hand, we would need them to correct the maps, and then, uh, they would be required to go to the zoning board prior to this board being able to make a consideration for approval of a sketch plan.
Would the zoning board be the lead agency?
Likely the planning board.
That would be decided at the time which, um, which entity would want to take lead agency status?
Alex, I'm just asking what the assignment's likely to be.
Typically, planning in the past has taken lead agency if it's been a subdivision which required ZBA with coordinated review for SEACRA, where you have two different agencies that both need to approve a project. There needs to be an internal discussion, and, and one of them needs to accept the lead agency.
Do we believe the applicant is looking for a vote on this tonight?
I'm not sure exactly what they are expecting, uh, vote-wise, um, but probably it would be helpful to hear input from the planning board to know what their next step, if any, should be.
Yes, who, would anyone care to provide an opinion or input on this one? I think they've identified, I think Kathy and Alex.
Oh, you have somebody?
I, I was trying to show the plans.
Yeah, I think Kathy and Alex have pointed out some complications, challenges to this one.
Well, in a hybrid zoning situation like that, which, which governs? Is it the more restrictive, or is it just where they're putting the driveway?
They, they actually, their, the code is silent on split zoning as far as what the area requirement would be. I mean, logically, you might say, okay, well, the proportionally that you would calculate the yield based on how much of it's in the R forty and how much is in R twenty. Uh, however, um, yeah, the, in this case, it's so much is in the R twenty. Um, it just seems that it should be, you know, we should be leaning towards the requirements of R forty. If, if, if you were gonna pick one of the two, they picked R twenty to do their calculations. So just, you keep that in mind. The other thing is that when you're looking at the plans later, um, the table is wrong the way they have one of them's labeled. Lot A and Lot B are reserved, reversed in the tables. So it might be confusing. It might say, oh, it says forty thousand square feet. That's actually the front lot, if that makes sense.
Kathy, given that you've pointed out, um, errors and, um, you said it's clear based on village code that the minimum lot requirement for the rear would need to be changed, would it be, uh, within our purview to have them address it themselves and come back to us again, uh, with clearing up the errors, um, and perhaps putting their best foot forward before we vote again? Is that...
I mean, we could send this to the, to the applicant as is and let them, um, deal with it. What do you think, Alex?
You certainly, um, could, and the board, we'd have to the board whether that would change their thinking about whether this is an acceptable subdivision layout.
Would they're correcting the, the mistakes that you've pointed out? That wouldn't have a lot of bearing on the zoning issue, though.
No, no, when we did the, when, the write-up is assuming that that back lot is, is the correct, uh, table, and I don't know which one's Lot A, Lot B, but, um, yeah.
Yeah.
It wouldn't change, it wouldn't change the situation. It's, it would just really be correcting it.
Yeah.
They would need, uh, they would need to, um, remove the area from the flag regardless. So even though they're, even if it was twenty thousand, the entire thing was, uh, in the R twenty, even, they wouldn't even have twenty thousand because, uh, they haven't subtracted the, uh, flag pole, uh, area, so.
If we vote and do not approve this, you have to write that up correctly. Alright, so let's, let's do this. Let's go back to the applicant and identify the big issues with this one, right, and have them resubmit. Can we do that? Yeah, right, that's probably the most efficient use of everyone's time here, because there are some...
Yeah.
Things that we've identified that are, are clearly problematic, I believe.
Is there anything that we would suggest that, you know, in terms of a shared driveway which has other problems and, and, you know, it's, it's not ideal but is allowed? You know, is there anything that we would suggest as an approach to what they wanna do that's not a flag lot?
If you, I, I think if you have, if, if you have suggestions...
I don't know. I, I haven't had a chance to look at it that closely.
Looking just at planning considerations, taking the, the ZBA or the, the, the need for variances or the need for, for lot area relief out of the equation on the planning board, and we have the ability to look at and to consider things such as, um, flag lots in particular. The comprehensive plan does disfavor flag lots. However, they do say that flag lots are allowable where they are less than five hundred feet in length and when they are generally straight and if they're well-designed. So it's really a, a matter of the board, considering if, in this particular project, in this particular area, um, if a flag lot is appropriate, if it will, um, if the subdivision would create any issues for surrounding properties for the neighborhood, um, traffic considerations for vehicles turning in and out.
The motion, the motion would be to tell them, our view is to resubmit. I, I think resubmit, but I also think that even with the flag lot here, that back lot is not large enough to meet. The, the back lot ha- has some challenges that need to be, um, discussed, so.
So given that, they can, um, take a moment to review and see what they could do, think about it, and come back or not, or whatever?
Think about it and come back, come back to us. Yeah, I think that's what we're suggesting, is that, um, that's what they do, based on Alex's comments, Kathy's comments, and, um, board member comments, okay? Well, the motion is to say, in view of what they've submitted, and we've had an hour or two to review, we recommend that they resubmit it to deal with the issues that have been tabled by our advisors. Thank you. Well said. Yeah, that's good. Is that okay? That's the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Adjourn to, wha- which date?
When they're ready.
Well, we just wanna put a specific date.
Aye, no, we want, yeah, let's do the specific date. Let's adjourn to the November, cause...
No, no, just, just for the record, we have a question. Is that a disapproval of the overall application? So should we restate the motion that we are, that we are leaving this open and soliciting revisions from applicant?
Are you adjourning on this then?
Yeah, we're, 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 we're probably if...
Yeah, we're, 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 we're probably, if, if the application is effective, we have to get their permission, we're giving permission to resubmit it and recommending that they rest, that they, that the application be examined and resubmitted in light of concerns that our advisors have given tabled this evening on a few hours of enabled review.
Correct.
Yeah, all in favor of that?
So we, we are adjourning pending information regarding um the, the need for a variance?
And if you write it down, we'll all edit it to be exact.
Is there a second for Alan's motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
I believe the only other thing we have on the agenda is um-
Just to go back, did we have a date certain that we were adjourning?
No, no, sorry, let's go to November, I think that was November sixth, yeah. Okay. I believe the only other agenda item is Fowler Farm.
Okay.
Okay. Gentlemen, sorry you had to wait.
Inter-sciencing counsel.
The applicant John Bennett, going to lead to building in South Hampton, New York, and Richard Warren, principal of-
Inter-sciencing.
So we did submit some revisions based upon some of the comments the board has submitted on September. So. So when we were here at the last meeting, there was discussions about the driveway access, um lots one and two that are at the intersection of Fowler and Wickapog here. And we had shown lots three and four, and actually four and five taking their access up through here.
Yeah, but you kind of moved that a little bit, because I think we're all looking over to see it. Oh, okay, we can do that right there as well.
So this was the plan when we were with you last time. You'll see that we had flag strips coming down through here, and there was a concern about the two lots, lots one and two that are along Wickapog Road. They contain agricultural buildings, and there was concern about access for native culture buildings in the ag reserve. So there was a discussion about taking these flag strips and flipping them over here to come out at Wickapog. So that's what we provided with this plan. We now have lots three and four taking their access through here. And we took the other lot, Lot Five, which was actually coming out here before, and we flipped that over, and they're gonna take their access now down here at the common driveway. So it'll be five, six, and seven off the common driveway to the south, and lots three and four taking access to the common driveway coming out through Wickapog. Um and now lots one and two will have direct contiguous common to the reserve there, that's twenty-five percent of the site.
So you'll remember, we started out with a, back in October, we gave you a full yield plan, which is a twelve lot, twelve lots, that's the conforming yield, it's the standard plan. Uh we then filed, I think it was a ten lot plan, ten lot plan, and that sparked primarily Nelson Pope comments about, primarily about uh open space. So what we did through a series of very long discussions with the applicant, talked about different economics and different uh methods of as preserving the ability to farm this and not develop it right away, but nevertheless lock in our development. Came back with a seven lot uh density. So that's a, that's a, that's a reduction of, of five lots, which is, in any circumstances, fairly significant. Just, it might be interesting in terms of what's happened in the area, that we get it heavily somewhere down here. Directly to the north, I guess directly to the north of the property. Hopefully this is it. Yeah. Directly to the north of this property, and remember, this is a, the, the village has no compulsory uh open space, but we did hear Nelson Pope and some of the boards concerned about open space, but directly to the north of this property is, was the um falls or subdivisions, two or three, so is it?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's right there. And this is a subdivision with twenty-five percent open space, but full yield. Other twelve, twelve lots on section one and two lots on section, I guess it's section-
Section one.
Section one is one and two? Fourteen lots, full yield, with twenty-five percent open space. We talked alone on life, uh about uh trying to work with the village uh in, in obtaining some large lots and some open space reserve. We provided the appropriate amount of open space, the same amount, I think it's a little bit, tad larger than across the street and also at the Old Town subdivision across the street from the hospital. So we've reached that reserve area, and we've also reduced um the number of lots by five. Now, certainly, uh larger lots are more valuable, we met with grazers and robbers. And the, the ten lot scheme would, would yield more uh in the client's pocket, but this is a client with long and deep roots in the village of Southampton. Uh we talked about creating some open space, so this is not only a sacrifice from the pocketbook, but a sacrifice in terms of yield. We think this is a very accommodative uh plan. Uh there was a request for uh public access. We did um provide the board with fairly significant um authority uh in our September eleventh letter, specifically Mackel versus Planning Board of Towne of East Hampton, and Nolan versus California Coastal Commission that states without, it's not even a gray area. You, you can't condition um any sort of land use permit on public access. Um Phillips Pond is one of those ponds that um there's really no, really no waterborne uses. It's uh in the pond, but probably with the exception historically of waterfowl hunting. Um there are, um, there is a, a small dock on the south end of it. Um I have never seen um any sort of uh boats or kayaks or anything in the pond, although it's hard to see because you don't really see the pond from, from Palo Street. Uh you can see it uh a little bit from the uh, the Blut property and those two lots, one of which is owned by the Conic Land Trust and the other one that just uh, I think one is owned by the land trust and one is owned by uh the Nature Conservancy, if I'm not wrong.
One by the George.
Yeah, oh, okay.
From, from the lots of the south end?
No, I was, yeah, at the south end, the, when you make the right into that, what used to be Pete Peterson's house. Um, I don't even know if it's on the map. Now, this, that's, this is, used, used to be Pete Peterson's house, you can see the pond from here, you get a glimpse of it from here, but most of the time it's really not visible. It's really not, there are really no waterborne uses there. Um the only, there's a sort of a close, much closer access point. The village owns this parcel and this parcel, there's an access point here, but that's privately owned. But um, it's not usual for, I mean, the trustees own it, you know, like the, by reason of the colonial patents, but I don't think there's been ever any need or use for access to it. It's not connected to any sort of uh waterway. So, but in any event, it's irrelevant because we, as, as we've demonstrated, um public access isn't something that can be required. I think this is a very, very, very uh-
I have to just stop you there for a second, because I, and push back on the idea of compulsory open space, because the village does have a master plan that suggests that the planning board should be requiring that there be open spaces in any subdivision. And explicitly gives the planning board jurisdiction to, in any subdivision request, to talk about and acquire as a condition, open spaces, and they actually suggest that they be separately deeded and also that, not only that the deed be separated out to the open space, but that it be maintained by a separate entity, because often a subdivision doesn't adequately maintain the open space.
Well, without, yeah.
I, I just, excuse me one second, the other thing is that I don't think anyone on the board said there should be public access in terms of walking. The suggestion was that the lots be open and there be an easement, potentially for the village to go in and take care of his body of water.
That's public access.
Well, the village has-
That's public access.
Okay, well, that is something that should be required of any public body that's owned by the-
Illegal, that's public access. I'll leave it to your counsel on that. That's public access, that's illegal.
Okay, and then Nelson Pope also talked about site bees, and it'd be nice to have a site shed to the body of water.
Nolan versus Coastal Commission? And it's a Supreme Court case. But Willa, Willa, public access is something that constitutionally you cannot require. I've given you that in black letter law.
Okay, well, one of the things is that Nelson Pope's, you know, suggested, and we talked about the idea of site sheds, and the idea that the Conic Land Trust saves this body of water Phillips Pond, there's a whole-
We didn't say that.
No, they, they are involved in buying some of the land around Phillips Pond, but there's no public access whatsoever, so you've brought, you know, butterflies back and restored, we're trying to restore the pond, but no one can ever look at it or see it, is a bit-
I don't follow you.
Troubling.
I don't, I don't follow you, 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 quite literally, it's a, it's a, it's a black letter, it's a fine line, you cannot require public access.
So if we need to clean up Phillips Pond, there's no way for anyone to ever reach it, it has to stay polluted or whatever is going on there?
Well, let me read, let me read to you, even before these very strong decisions from the Supreme Court of the United States, let me read to you these very, this decision from the appellate division, second court. Um, a condition um may be imposed so long as there's a reasonable relationship between the problem to be alleviated, in the case of bar, no such relationship exists. There is currently no lawful public access to the beach over the petitioner's property. The proposed subdivision will in no manner alter this state, uh therefore, it's an illegal condition. I put it in, in the letter.
Okay, but nobody was, we were discussing the possibility of having shared access by all the lots, not just for the border on the lake, that was what was suggested.
But, but the discussion at the last meeting was access by other than homeowners, that, that, that's a discussion that took place at the last meeting.
Yeah, that was really, and you, and you were gonna look into whether, yeah.
And try, try to get access to, for the trustees or something like that.
I, I was proud for that, and I do recall that conversation, and I don't recall it being, um, us floating that as a, as a hard and fast condition, as a-
Well, it couldn't be.
And I don't recall if your client was willing to, or if we even discussed some sort of very limited scope easement for access to the pond in the event of emergency, I can't recall if that was discussed. Well, i- 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 if, if there's an emergency requirement for access to the pond, it would fall under the uh, on the ambit of a, a public or private necessity. The same way during a storm, you can raft up uh to another boat. That's, it's called a public or a private necessity, and you, they're just gonna have to rely on that.
The logical place for the access is to try to build something off of the two properties that are already owned by the village here at the south end. Try to pick up a piece right here. That's the logical place, not drive it through a subdivision. This is a piece of, this is a piece of wetland through here, wetlands that extend back up through here, nobody's ever gonna be able to develop in that little dog tail through there. That's the logical place for access. Were those lots dedicated as part of the subdivision?
No, I don't, I don't believe it was.
No, no, no.
I thought that they were at some point in the past.
Well, they're, they're owned by the municipality.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering how they became owned by the municipality, I thought as part of a, an earlier subdivision, they would dedicate it. I, I do, for some reason I can't find that file, but I know I can see it, so.
No, unfortunately, the town, the town scrubbed a lot of their, their village information, it was sort of a spiteful thing. The town scrubbed a lot of the village information from the GIS when the village decided they didn't want it as part of the GIS.
Yeah, so I agree with what John was saying, but I, I think the point, if we take a step back and look at it from twenty thousand feet, I, I think the point that Will is trying to make is the comprehensive master plan says that the village planning board should do what it can to protect wetlands. And I think the concept here is somehow we have to address or talk about at this point, if you've got to get in and, and do some work to Phillips Pond, we've got to figure out a way to do that, and it ought to be part of the discussion here, so that, you know, we've, we've-
And just for more consideration, um, looking at section ninety-seven, thirty-nine.
B of the code, which results, or which addresses concerns about surface waters of the village. Um in relevant part, the planning board may require as part of its approval of a subdivision map, the dedication of perimeter parkland or easements or covenants to accomplish such protection. That protection they refer to is um issues of siltation, nutrification, fertilization, or any other form of possible, probable degradation.
Yeah, we're getting so, let me finish, we're getting so far-
We, I, I, I think that we should probably turn to, to the, the plat itself.
I know the answers to this based upon the law and based upon my experience litigating these issues. We're so far afield, we're so far afield, where every one of these lots conforms to the required wetland setbacks, every single one of them, number one. Number two, you can require the creation of a park, but you cannot require that it be dedicated. That's the case I litigated uh at the parish pond subdivision. You can require a park, but you can't require the dedication.
To the general public.
Absolutely not. So, and also, what I'm sort of scratching my head and what's getting lost here, is this is a twelve lot yield, we came in with ten lots, we're at seven lots here. I'm sort of waiting-
Yeah, that should be the norm, and that's why the board is here, that, well, it needs to be the norm.
It's not the norm. It's, well, it isn't the norm now.
To, to brisk-
Not the norm now.
Okay.
What, what Mr. Bennett is pointing out is that he's bringing in conforming lots, but that he could also get more lots under the current zoning.
Yeah, but we should never, you, I mean, we, we, that's not our purview, it's to make an environmentally friendly subdivision.
It's absolutely not your purview, it's your mandate. It's your mandate.
Absolutely not, you're here to advocate for your clients in a subdivision, and we're here to protect the village and the environment, and
No, 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 you're here- No, no, no. You're here to-
It's not about what a court's gonna do, it's about what, you know, is a nice development and what is legally permissible as well.
What's permissible is a twelve lot subdivision, and we came in and- Are you threatening twelve, it sounds like you're just threatening twelve lots if you don't-
I don't, I, I, I think that we should, I, I just do think that it'd be prudent to, to move on from-
Just a minute, okay, all right, let's back up a bit, let's, let's timeout.
That, I've come in with a significantly reduced plan, Mr. Cummings, I'm not threatening a damn thing.
Mr., just, Mr. Bennett, just, just a moment, please, okay?
Tone is pretty inappropriate. Really what? Your tone is inappropriate. I find your tone inappropriate.
All right.
I don't, but let's not get that out.
We're gonna stop this right now, okay, otherwise we're gonna take a, a recess and get this back under control. No one speaks unless the chair recognizes that person, please, okay, number one. Number, and that's a hard rule we're gonna have going forward, number one. Number two, I think, just to paraphrase, we have some suggestions, okay? The suggestion is, we're the village planning board, we wanna plan how we clean the lake. Ought to be something that, if you don't have an idea, you probably have a better idea how to do that than we would, so let's figure that out. Whether it's access through something that the village owns, oh, let's figure it out. That's all we're saying is, let's figure out, if we ever have to clean the lake, how we do it, okay? Just come up with a plan. Appreciate that um you could do a denser version in this, and this is a, a, a new version, so let's start there and talk about this uh seven lot plan, okay? Willa, you good with that, Mary, everybody?
So moving on, and with no discussion of water, pond, at this point, we're looking at the, the standards of the plat?
Correct, yeah, 'cause that, that's the important thing here, that's what I want, I don't wanna get lost in, I mean, it's a good point, thank you for bringing it up, but I, I, let's focus on the, you know, the lots, 'cause I, um, yeah, let's focus on that, okay, everybody?
So can I then ask about how wide the roads are? 'Cause it was my suggestion that you have some of the lots emptied into Wickapog, to reduce traffic going down that, right, which you did. So I'm just wondering about how, what the width?
These will, these will be common, I think, I, these, these will be common driveways, the specifications. We've just shown here, you've got twenty feet of frontage for each of these lots, lots five, six, and seven. So there's sixty feet through here coming down that narrows down with a turnaround, but there's gonna be probably a, you know, eighteen, twenty foot wide, you know, driveways. But the specification we worked out, as we do work for another, this is just a concept to show an area where a driveway is gonna, a common driveway will go. There are common driveway specifications.
The reason I agree about that is because the master plan also says that the planning board should require the least width, the smallest driveways, you know, preferably of permeable material, because that whole area of Wickapog is now part of a restoration plan with rainwater gardens planned all along the Wickapog Road. So although I suggested emptying out, you know, a couple of those lots, you know, if they could be permeable material, if they could be the most narrow that they could be, that would be, I think, preferable.
Don't, don't, don't misread the plan. Yeah, don't misread the plan, that the cross hatch area is gonna be a driveway, that's not it, that's just a location where a driveway will go.
Yeah.
And we'll work out the specifications with the village planning board.
And we'll work out the specifications with the village planning board and the village engineers. That's an important point, as, under, 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 under state law and village law, you have to provide twenty feet of feet access to these lots. That's really important. So sometimes people look at this and think that's going to be a wall or a sea of asphalt, far from it. What you do is you have the required access, legal access into these lots and then through them you weave a common driveway with a common driveway agreement.
Can, can I get a clarification here? Is it twenty or twenty-five feet? I thought it was twenty-five, Alex.
I believe it is twenty-five. There's some different requirements in different parts of the code, but part of the zoning ordinance with respect to flag lots requires twenty-five is my understanding.
Yeah. Yep. Is there a measurement?
Go ahead, John.
Do we have a measurement as to the length of the poles on the south end? The only reason I ask is I see, I'm looking to ninety-seven, thirty-eight, six of the code, no common driveway. There'll be more than five hundred feet in length, just to ensure that we're.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's, that's a, 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 a master plan suggestion.
That's in the code, that's thirty-eight, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, you have the authority.
Thirty-nine, seventy.
You have the authority under the, you have the authority to waive that in appropriate case, uh, which is the catchall phrase at the end of the code. But remember, one of the things that we're trying to do here, and it's proven very, very effective on the Halsey subdivision to the east, rather, west, is by creating these lots with flagpole access, um, as opposed to requiring the installation of roads. The hope is that they'll be not put in use for residences, uh, right away, for some time. The Halsey subdivision down the road is approved.
Thirteen years ago.
Thirteen years ago. There are no new, there are no new houses on it. Um, and I dare say that if the road was required to be constructed, at that point, the sort of game is over in terms of being able to farm it. So the Fowler farming, Fowler farming is still engaged in agriculture. Um, this is a method for creating lots, candidly for creating value, but also allowing the farming to continue to go on. That's what you saw down at the, at the Halsey subdivision just to the west of here. Again, they're probably, there's, and, and interestingly enough, if you look at that subdivision, um, I think I have it here. Where's the other one? No, hold on a quick second. So I just wanted to contrast, the open space on that subdivision is not, is nowhere near as, uh, public as it were. Public, public, and the city, it's public, and the city office. So this is the, this is the, um, Halsey subdivision down the road. And you'll see, none of these lots have been, have been built. That was the, and the reason they were created with the flag lots, uh, was so that a road wouldn't have to go in right away. The open space is here, uh, not terribly visible from, from the road.
And the, the lot size in that is about four or five acres, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes, these are three and something, but it's a smaller piece.
Okay, so. So those lots are much larger.
They're, they're, they're larger because of the narrow depth. That's the only reason. We did this plan.
Okay.
In order to establish reasonable building outputs for these lots, you're restricted by where this road's gonna be and wetlands on the side. So these building outputs are much narrower than what we have. Yeah, it's more impacted by wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
That's our eighty, that's our space.
Also our eighty.
Yes.
Uh, and again, the open space percentage is just about the same, a tad less.
So, yeah, then we'll move on here.
Just a question. Question if I may?
Sure.
As to, as to the overall concept, so from what I'm understanding, the idea is to keep the agricultural improvements on the sides close to Fowler Street and then farm the reserve area behind it, but I see that, what are the?
Well, we'd farm the whole thing, uh, 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 until there was some development on it.
And, but what?
So if you put.
So the two northerly, what is northerly, the, the, the two lots on the side of Fowler Street,
Yes.
if those are part of the subdivision, if the plat is filed, those are now legally buildable lots, someone can come in and build those. If those are, if the, the agricultural improvements, for lack of a better term, if those are taken off, what becomes of the farmed area behind it?
This area here, because this, this?
That, yes, correct.
Yeah, it's going to be like every ag reserve put, deeded to a separate entity, but it'll be as all ag reserves are, they're not deeded to the public. They're deeded to a separate entity, subject to limitations on it. No, you know, residential development, uh, only agriculture, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So it will be continued to be farmed?
That, that piece of it will continue to be available for agriculture only in perpetuity.
Okay.
That's the whole concept of it, a- a- and I, you know, we got into, the village code, unlike certain codes, does not require, um, does, has, has no mandatory clustering, but it, I, I don't wanna get into that because we're here to give you a clustered, uh, 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 subdivision. But the beauty of this is that even though it's a cluster, every one of these lots conforms to the minimal zoning. As a matter of fact, some of them are much, much larger. It's a two acre zone, I think the only one, there's only one lot that's at eighty thousand square feet. This one's about ninety, some of them are three, three, one's three, well, you see it right here. So we've, it, by significantly reducing the density, we've been able not only to create lots that conform, which is a great thing, and in some cases, much, much more than conform. Oh, one of them's almost twice the zone, but also to give open space. And if you think that, if you see a little bit of ire, I'm, I'm gonna be very human and very candid with you. We, we, this took a lot of convincing to an old line Southampton family that had seen development around it, pretty much with the one exception of the, um, Halsey subdivision, which you pointed out has some large lots, pretty much standard planned subdivision or full yield subdivision with open space. So I, I'm, I'm looking to be very candid with you. I think some kudos are, 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 are truly, 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 uh, required here to the, to, to the Fowler family. They've heard the concerns of the planning board, they've heard the concerns of Nelson Pope. We spent an awful lot of time with him and this is a very, very significant, and, uh, yield reduction. Uh, all these lots will conform to all zoning setbacks. We've tried to create a situation by using these flag lots, um, of being able to hopefully keep it in preservation, and not in preservation, in agricultural use for a bit longer. As with the, uh, um, Halsey subdivision down the road, uh, the Fowler farming, the family is still involved in farming, as it has been for generations, but this is where we are. We think it's a gentle approach to the future.
Thank you.
I appreciate you letting me say that.
Yeah, no, I think we, um, certainly appreciate the amount of work that went into this, um, plan and developing this plan. And as you know, it's an iterative process, so if you, if you're, if that's, if you're finished, then we'll open it up for any questions, comments.
One quick design question.
John, go ahead.
So is there any willingness or, or possibility, um, how do I put this? Would there be any idea possibly of flipping the reserve area to be along that corner of Fowler and near its intersection with Wickapog? Yes, essentially reversing where those lots one and two are and putting the reserve area in the front, rather.
Well, they have all the buildings in here, all existing buildings are there.
But is the, if the applicant's not particularly married to them or is willing to, to part with them if they were built on as a subdivision lot?
I wanna just second that, if I may.
Yep, please, Willa.
I was gonna have the exact same comment because the master plan suggests a green belt and because Wickapog is the subject of restoration and a concern with the village about runoff. And they're planting eight rain gardens along it. And the master plan says there should be a green belt along a major road where there's a subdivision granted by the planning board. And also that open spaces should be connected to other open spaces like a green belt. Would the applicant consider having a green belt along Wickapog so that when there is development along there, there's a, you know, a green area where, that would accommodate runoff, especially since you now have two lots exiting on Wickapog Road, which was my suggestion, which I actually think probably increases the value of those lots because they now have a Wickapog address and you don't have to drive all the way around. I personally think that that is probably, you disagree with that or?
I think there's more traffic through here than you're gonna have over here, so removing a private access to here is probably more than a.
So.
It's not any of your request.
Yeah, um, I, I think the comprehensive master plan asks us to preserve and enhance existing open space and I, I think it's in the context of a, a public benefit. And if that open space was along Wickapog as opposed to Fowler, you know, more of the public would be able to benefit from that open space because fewer cars are gonna go down Fowler Street. I think that's where Willa, I don't mean to paraphrase or translate.
Yeah, or, or a green belt, you know, a narrower green belt that then, you know, in addition to the reserve area or, you know, a slightly smaller reserve area with a green belt so that what you see from the road, because a lot of developments that we're seeing now are right on the road and they're big houses and it's not the farmland that is, you know, aesthetically pleasing in the village.
Yep. Can we go by first names here, do you mind?
Yeah, I, I.
Can I, can I, can I?
We'll all wait.
Well, I, I think the question is, can you give us your thinking on why you located the reserve area where you did and not on the corner where, you know, more, it's gonna have a greater public benefit?
Because I've got a multi-generation farm down the, and, and all the subdivision work I've done in the town, the village of Southampton, I've never had someone ask a multi-generation farm family to move their agricultural buildings. I, I'm really sort of almost shocked about it.
You only, I, but, so, John, but, John, just a moment, but, um, I, I thought you had said earlier that the idea was to farmless until you're ready to develop it and then when you develop it, you're gonna stop.
Well, maybe that'll never happen. Maybe that'll never happen.
This relationship here may happen for a long time, even after these houses are built. But just, if there's a house built here, doesn't mean that they're gonna move this up.
Yeah.
They still have agricultural lands across the street.
So, so, Richard, if I may call you, um, the idea is to, um, develop this possibly piecemeal where you might sell off one or two of the lots, but continue to farm the rest. Is that, is that accurate?
No, no, that's the same idea that happened across the street.
Understood, yeah.
But as soon as like one of these lots down here might get sold, then this common driver would get installed.
Understood, yeah.
So, cuz we understand that's gonna be a precursor to getting a building from here. But that doesn't mean that this part through here might not stay.
Yep.
And in terms of open space, there's, there's property across the street, quite a bit, this contiguous open space here. This comes in for a subdivision, I guess would be the planners of the town would require that as they usually do. You can't just look at it as a vista that stops at the pool of the subdivision down.
Uh, John, can I interrupt there? Cuz you, you, that's a really interesting point that you raise. The, the town zoning requirements, and I agree with you that, you know, you wanna, if you can, think about these on a, a comprehensive basis. The town zoning would require cluster housing on the other side and depending upon the size of the lots.
Absolutely.
It, the town code mandates the amount of preserve that's required. Is that, can, can you enlighten the board on the specifics of that?
Depends upon the zoning, it's a, it's a, it's a sliding scale. Interestingly enough, the, uh, the larger the zoning requirement, for example, in the five acre zone, it's a sixty-five percent open space requirement.
Right.
Uh, the, um, or it is fifty, or it is fifty, uh, parish pond, which, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did, did, quite many years ago, it was sixty, it was a twenty-five percent requirement. So I think this is already, it's probably a fifty percent requirement in the town.
Right.
Is Fowler Street accessible to the public? Is Fowler Street, can anyone go down there since that's the town, this part?
Oh, yes. You can, when, this is what happens with Fowler, when you get, it's, there's a, there's a beach at the end of Fowler.
Mm-hmm, right, mhm.
And if you, and there's parking. And there's parking there.
There's, there's parking.
And, but when you get down to the end of Fowler, just before the beach, the left is private.
Okay.
Um, and there're probably, I would say, ten, eleven, twelve Fowler Lane. And then to the right is what looks like, uh, some public land, but it's not. There are two separate lots before you get to what used to be Pete Peterson's house. It's, sits there sort of by itself.
Yep. So, so, um, Richard, the, I'm, the, on a, if you were to do two acre lots across the street in town, what would the preserve requirement be according to town code, which appears to be more onerous than the village code here?
Also, there's been, there has been a preliminary, there has been a, there's been a minor subdivision.
Minor subdivision, right.
A four, this was a four lot subdivision, at one point, three lots were taken out.
But there's three houses down here now on, on the pond.
So there's already a, an, a town approved subdivision on the, on the.
With a provision that if this, the remainder came back in for subdivision, it's a major subdivision, they have to take the open space for the entirety of the property.
And the size of the, the size of the lots that are the minor?
The minor, they're about a hundred thirty dollars.
Not the size of some of the bigger lots, yeah. That's a, a tool that, that a lot of subdivisioners use. They come in, they minor, minor off four lots and they leave a large lot for future subdivision. But they're losing some density.
Yeah, under, you know, that's really helpful, thank you. And so that if they did, uh, the area on your right of, on the other side, you're, yeah, that side, that's, yeah. Those would have to be the same size lots as the minor.
No.
They would, they could be.
They'll be small, they'll be small.
Smaller.
They'll be small.
They'll be smaller because when they did the minor subdivision, they didn't take any open space out of the minor.
Understood.
So now the resulting lots, it would happen, it would have to be smaller or it will have to be a reduced density subdivision in order to make the lots bigger, just to make your open space smaller.
I get it, thank you.
They got a big pop out of it, so to speak.
Yeah, and then if they were to do, say, two acre lots, which you're, which you're proposing across the street, the preserve would have to be what on the town side?
This is, I believe this is probably gonna be a fifty percent open space.
What is this reserve area, what is the access for people? Do they, do they just walk by and look at it? Can the public go on it or is it private? It's just, it's just private, so would there be?
Agricultural use.
Right, okay, so this whole, it's just reserved, but would it be visible or can they build a fence or could they block the view?
I have seen, that's really, it's interesting cuz I had this conversation with, uh, some of the, uh, people. I know you're the Sagaponic planner, but I've seen people talk, were talking to me about a subdivision in Sagaponic and what I thought could be done. Uh, there was a Bridge Lane subdivision in Sagaponic and the Sagaponic Board, uh, said you couldn't have, couldn't have any sort of fencing or any, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't fencing. You couldn't, uh, have plantings that obscured the public view.
Couldn't privet hedge it to be security.
Couldn't privet hedge, couldn't prevent.
You have that restriction right here.
So that's what I'm asking about this.
There's a limitation on the privet hedge right here that can be done a little improvement.
Yeah.
I think the, the only thing that, that would be, I think it would probably be, you have a problem probably with the Right to Farm Act. And I don't think you could prevent them from putting, uh, deer fencing, uh, in a way that obviously wasn't opaque or anything, but you could certainly covenant, require a covenant that there be no board fencing or, uh, it's what, and affect the same thing via vegetative buffer.
Right.
But it's interesting because most of the, most of the, it's a, it's sort of an interesting way to get the, and everybody who was involved in it pretty much ultimately admitted to me when I was doing a lot of this work in the town, that agricultural preserve stuff that the county did and the town did and then the open space planning and everything, it was much as, as, as much an agricultural, as, as much as, it was as much an open space program as it was an ag reserve, um, program. Which is, it's fine, it had the, the two benefits.
Willa.
Oh, I just wanted to go back to, because you said something about no one's ever asked anyone to move old buildings.
They're not old buildings.
Which you, their buildings, but then you were saying they weren't historic. I, I don't think anyone said they should be moved, other than if a developer comes in and is gonna put a house on that property that it have the regular setbacks, because you were suggesting that it should be, stay, remain the way it is with the buildings.
No, that's not what I said. It's absolutely not what I said.
No, but you said that someone on the board had suggested moving their, removing their buildings.
I speak in very specific ways. This is what I said. What I said was that the village of Southampton in the past, when there are existing structures on buildings, has allowed lots to be created and not be required to adhere to the new setbacks so long as they stayed in the ownership and under the control of the same people. And the example that I used was the Kuwaitan property, that wonderful property on Halsey Neck Lane. It has a, it has a lot in the middle and this is the beautiful single family residence, but there are two flanking lots on either side. And on both of those lots, there are how, there are accessory structures and buildings that do not meet the zoning setbacks as they relate to the main lot. But the village wisely, I think, allowed the owner, as long as they, those three lots, that Kuwaitan bundle, were in control by the same people, allowed those wonderful accessory structures to stay there because they didn't want to. because they didn't want to encourage development of those three lots. And sure enough, it's been twenty-five years and it's all stayed the same. Those are three lots that you're looking at there. So the whole idea would be, I'm sorry.
I just wanna ask a question. I wanna understand what you're asking for. Are you saying these, you know, these two lots down here, so if we had these two lots, and pardon my cryptic, this is the only way. But if we had these two lots and we put these two lots here, this would become the reserved area here. Is that what you're asking for?
I think that's one answer to what various people suggested.
But doing that, you would allow these structures to remain on the reserved area during the period of time while they continue to farm. So we put two lots here.
I think that's a really interesting suggestion.
I think that's an interesting proposal. Well, I think that answers the concern. I don't think.
Cause that's what you're asking for. Cause I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what you're asking for.
That would be a.
I was suggesting a green belt, like, because the, the master plan suggests a green belt on the main road, you know, which creates a nice buffer, but what you're saying is another way to approach that so that there's a preserved land.
No, but then you have two houses here.
No, I think that, that's another approach that would answer the idea.
But you're doing that, your opens, the open space, the, the twenty-five percent open space now is gonna include structures.
I, I, I just wanna be precise. I don't think we're asking for anything yet. I think we're trying to understand optionality here and preserve what's, and, and make.
I think that's a mistake, by the way, but I just wanna find out what you're.
And do what's gonna benefit the public the most, right? And open, everyone, I don't think anyone in the room disagrees that open space is a great benefit. And to the extent that that open space can be, uh, enjoyed by the most people in the village, I think that's hard to argue against.
And we started talking about the old.
Visually, visually enjoyed, yeah.
That's the big sense of it, just seeing it versus not seeing it.
And just if I may, for, just to clarify my.
John, yeah, go ahead, please.
Just to clarify my earlier point, my, my question or my observation just came out of my confusion. I wasn't sure if the plan or the, the concept was to immediately start building on those two lots and if the applicant was, was willing to part with the buildings or what have you. That, that was where my, my thought process was coming from.
Well, can, can Kathy comment, like, or inform us about that? If the same, if the properties are held by the same entity, does the village allow the same structures to continue? Or what does it mean to be held by the same entity? Will, like setbacks apply? If, if you build a big house, like a ten bedroom house on those lots?
Oh, yeah.
Then what if it's owned by somebody?
No, no, it's, it's, yeah, I think, I think the question is, is as soon as, I mean, as long as this property is owned and farmed by the Fowler family, as soon as, um, these get separated and to another entity and they go to build a house, it has to conform with zoning. Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
The trigger would be a political, not, you know.
And that would be on bar, jurisdiction.
Yes, we have, we have, we've done it both ways and it's been much more, uh, it's much more, it works better at, at the building, building permit stage, that's true.
Trigger would be a building, uh, but they, they could change the ownership and give this to one of their sons or daughters. But this, this is about state planning for this family as well, so they would, you know, they would put these in different ownership but the property would remain for all intents and purposes, used the way it is until such time as time came to develop something.
Yeah, and I, I don't think anyone objected to that.
So, so, yeah, I don't think anyone objected. Is the operative thing their development or when they cease to farm?
No, it's the operative thing is, is the, is the development.
Development.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't, it's interesting, you can't compel someone to farm ag reserve. Like, for example, you can't say, okay, you haven't been farming it for a year. Uh, you, you, once the ag reserve is created, you can limit it.
Yeah.
And which is clearly what we're suggesting doing here, uh, limit agricultural use only, but you can't compel someone to actually farm it. Witness, and I don't think it's gonna happen here, cause you have an active farm family, but witness, there are many open space area, there are many ag reserves that you drive by, for example, on Scuttle Hall Road and some other other places, but there are ag reserves where no one's farming.
Understood, John. I think I just wanna make sure it's clear that we're not asking them, as was implied earlier, to move that, that, those farm buildings, right? That, that's not, that's not what we're saying.
Well, if you, but if you wanted to create the open space area, that's, that's what I'm scratching my.
But if they, I'm just a hypothetical here. If they were, um, if that open space were created when they stopped using those buildings for farming, what, you know, explain to me that.
You'll have a piece of paper there. But then you've got a possi, then you have a possibility where you have two houses here, they're continuing to farm and now all of a sudden you've got this effective narrow corridor. And, and by the way, in terms of access and people seeing this, when was the last time in the summertime you went down to Fowler Beach? It's a very, very, very popular beach. A lot of people use Fowler. But these are some of the things we're throwing at. I know we're just sort of spitballing to the degree now.
The, the conditionality can be developed.
I just think from planning, that's not where it goes.
We're, 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 we're struggling for your clients of all ages and all levels. You started with brokers. Brokers are, I assume, that was a, a good rhetorical get. Bro, brokers are only running part of this.
Oh, of course.
And prices go up and down and that, and I use private hedges as a, as a code for what we know goes on when it develops. You have inserted agricultural financing. We know all this stuff and the variables. The suggestion that this conversation leads to is we need to wrestle with inputs from two major sources, which is, and, and you do too, the public, okay, pretty ineffable, but we see them in lots of incarnations to show up suddenly in the village and it gets to us and all, to what's going, what are the choices that were made to, to do it? And number two, you are fascinating with the development of the town. There are three jurisdictions, the town as opposed to the village and minor is what I call the F and C trustees, whose water it is. And juxtaposition of those for such things as drainage, which is the big operation now, which is a section of the Kennedy Preservation Fund legally for once, not just old farms. Those three, the things come to us to wrestle. The town restrictions across the road, which you guys recited, I think accurately, we saw it with, with what I call the Roscoe Development by the railroad tracks. Big open grass by the railroad tracks, probably a good idea. Who wants a major house with those trains here increasing every day? Good trade-offs. There may be trade-offs here. We'd like to take you back to your clients from generations to see. Are there any trade-offs here that haven't come before us with this drawing, which is a good improvement from prior drawings? Are there any others? We'd like to throw it back to you to discuss the trade-offs.
I started this process with the Fowler family in two thousand and six.
That's pretty good.
Two thousand and six, and I worked through Rick Fowler until he passed away.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I worked with Mitch Fowler and now this is inherited by the, by their children, so.
Yeah, right, oh, no.
We've, we've worked on more plans than I care to think about. And I think that this is probably the fairest design.
That, that's my, my, I have, I have indirect, uh, recollection of your larger history, but with this going and with a town on the side.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I do go, and my children go down this road often for many recreational, a lot of reasons. It's not a stranger spot, but it would, it would, if, if you, if you, if they just say, no way, this is as good as it, that's fine. But we're just getting, saying, we need, we need maximum, we get maximum duty to vet as many alternatives as we can. If you guys can help us, hallelujah.
I think what this plan does, this preserves the view that you've been enjoying. Because right now you don't have a view here and you don't have a view here. So the view, the view that you've been enjoying driving down it will, will remain.
There are lots of pluses. We're in, we're envisioned by a lot of people that did the plan. They probably, the plan probably had a lot of input for the, what we're now constrained in part by. Cause a lot of people probably never been to Fowler Beach. They've never, never been down here.
I have to tell you, if I, can I speak?
I don't think so.
I'm sorry, Alan, I apologize.
You're okay, good.
So that, that's just.
Yeah.
I, you'll have objections, you'll have problems, you'll have access, we have roads, we, we know that, we know this, we'll, we'll wrestle with all that stuff. But if, if interplanetary Fowler's fine, if that's it, then, but you, you, you guys can deal with that. We're not supposed to and we won't do as well.
Okay, John.
I have to tell you, one of the tensions that Rich and I work with all the time are people that, I, I, I wanna say this in sort of a colloquial way, that people think that we're not being assertive enough in, in what we're telling them to present. And there are some, I've even had a prior planning board member in the town of Southampton saying, I don't know why John, your clients don't come in with that, when they want this. And that is, that's never been, never been the way, particularly when I'm working with Rich, that I operate. And I, I'm talking to you about a, a, a method of proceeding that we've done, we've used for about thirty years now. So what you see here is an awful lot of discussion and, I'm just gonna say it, of kicking and dragging along with clients you have to explain to, well, let's see, we can go in and we can ask for the maximum and then we can get a positive declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, because you're gonna have twelve acres. And then we can go through all the machinations that a municipality can do to slow something down. Uh, and, okay, so that was heard at the first point and we came in and we gave up two lots. And then we saw Kathy's, uh, memo and then we heard some of the comments from the board. And this went where I thought, probably Rich and I thought it should go at the very beginning. But we have done an awful lot of your work for you, which is to try to take into account the things that you have to take into account, that you're required to take into account. Uh, and, and to educate the client in understanding that these are the sort of things that we have to take into account. So this, uh, is a, is a very non-aggressive plan. This is giving up five lots in the Village of Southampton. Uh, and, and, and it was no threat before. Actually, what I was waiting for actually was the compliment that we got the client to understand our thinking on this and, and to understand what we thought were some of the concerns that the planning board would have. You have an interesting situation here. You have a clustered subdivision, but the lots conform. And some of them are almost twice the size of zoning. And how did we get there? We got there through significant density reduction. So.
May I respond?
Excuse me?
I, I'd like to respond to what you said.
Yeah, go ahead, Willa.
Um, one thing being, perhaps it was raised at, Amanda raised at the last, my fellow board member raised at the last meeting that we should ask to have a tour of the property, walk the property, which I think might be a good idea because I don't know if, you know, I or other board members have a real sense of the feeling of the lot and it's a very scenic area that is, you know, of interest, I think, to the public. Um, so I wanted to say that and then also I wanted to respond to Richard because, Richard, I'm sorry, what was that?
Bring your boots.
Oh, yes. So, yeah, and then Richard had said, what is it that you're looking for in terms of the lots being moved potentially or a green belt? But I think we started the discussion at the last meeting with the discussion and the plans on the Keen Development Old Town Road. So I guess in my mind, when we're discussing it, like, the, the trade-offs there seem to be the big lot, the open green space, a giant wildflower area that's huge, that the public enjoys, I think, and that you can bike through. And then there's also a green belt huge buff, you know, buffer on the other side of the development. And then also you can bike or walk and see the pond, which is heavily polluted now. And I guess the homeowners are like endlessly distraught about it, cause you can't really vote on it, cause it's so polluted, which is a problem in the village in general. But you've got the big green belt buffer on one side that they gave up and you've got the wildflower development and it's because it was an important agricultural area. So every time I go in that or buy that, I think that was like a model of stellar development. I don't know what the trade-offs were. I'm talking about.
Old Town. You're talking about Old Town. You're talking about Old Town Crossing.
It's just beautiful. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the Keen Development.
Yeah, Old Town Crossing.
It's just beautiful. I don't know the ins and outs of it. I don't, it's just very, very attractive. And you can also see the body of water, so there's a site shed. There's also a huge road on one side of it that's like preserved and then there's a giant wildflower garden. So I don't know if we can do all of that, but I, you know, um, I think, I think for the board to be able to ask questions and bring up whatever in this process of coming up with the most, you know, the best trade-offs for a beautiful site are in the interest of the applicant and the board and public and everybody. So I'm not sure why it ends up being adversarial.
Yeah, look, I, I, yeah, just one second. You, you, you both have been working on this, you know, twenty years, so we appreciate that that probably included a lot of back and forth and, you know, yeah, a lot of negotiation has been going on this. We've gotta view it in the context of, you know, today and, and what, where the village is going, what the comprehensive master plan directs. And I think that's where a lot of these questions are coming. Fully appreciative of the work that's gone into this in the past, but, you know, we're guided by today's rules.
But also your, but also your regulations, not just the comprehensive plan, which are regulations.
Understood.
The, the village could have, if they chose to put in mandatory clustering, the Southampton has, the East Hampton town has, but the village doesn't do it. They have their comprehensive plan, but your regulations, which you're guided under to review applications.
Yep, understood.
So we feel that this is, this is a fair compromise, given the master plan and the regulations that the village has and it's also consistent with the subdivision that we've done.
Understood.
I just have to respond to that. This is, this, I view Old Town as one of the biggest missed opportunities of the Village of Southampton in the last thirty years. This was fifty acres of, of farmland, fifty acres of farmland. There's no, no farming left on this site, none.
It's probably the best, the best farmland on the South Fork.
Best farmland on the South Fork and it was a massive dropping of the ball, okay? The, at a minimum, this is a flower garden, at a minimum, there was a open space here that was provided by a gift from the Fowler family. And why all that wasn't clustered to create not only agricultural reserve, but significant habitat? This was all, this was, and this open space, this is nothing. This is just used by the, it's a green. So there's, there's no natural vegetation there. There's no agricultural use for it. This.
People bike into it. It's, you know, used by the public. People stroll, see these strollers down there.
It's a private road.
It's a private road, yeah.
Yeah, it's not enforced, but it's.
I, I mean, I think that might be getting into the reuse a little bit.
No, 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 this was being used as a model for how to develop it. We've actually done a lot of things that, that the code directs us to do. This was a lost opportunity.
Can you, can you address one other thing for us in your thinking? And I think Alex or Kathy mentioned this before, but the, the flag lot design here is, probably the word that's coming to mind is a disfavored design in the current environment. Can you talk about that for a minute?
Well, generally if you're creating, uh, smaller lots.
Is that, is that, I don't mean to speak for you, but is that fair? Is that what we talked about?
Yeah, I think that's what, what it says in the complaint and what it says in the subdivision design guidelines that are a part of the code.
Yeah, but generally if you're creating smaller lots in smaller zones, uh, I don't think those flag lot concerns apply here. I mean, probably most controversially, it depends on the litigation, how of course, who is the, uh, the, uh, there's a Husky subdivision where you were, there were smaller lots involved. These, there's, there's effectively no difference from a, a physical point of view in what we've done here other than a country lane road spec. Uh, and, 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 you know, I think only maybe one of them is larger than, is longer than five hundred feet.
But, but the flag lot design here doesn't preclude you from designing natural physical hardscape improvements to be similar to a small country road. It could be, could be like a road. It's just that we've done it by easement, so this way the roads don't have to be put in prior to anything happening else. So this way the subdivision get approved, the roads will go in. Essentially that's gonna be the end of the farming on the property.
This has all been very thought out.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion with the, um, has there been any, excuse me, has there been any discussion with the fire chief or commissioner as to if the turns are negotiable by fire apparatus?
Oh, we're gonna do essentially, because Dean and company are very, very reasonable, Dean McNamara, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that, uh, this is all, uh, more than adequately available for emergency vehicle access and fire apparatus. There's no question about that. I mean, he's gonna tell us how he wants it built, what kind of clearances he wants, what kind of load he wants the roads to take and we're gonna do it. That's all there is to it. I mean, that's all, all there is to it. He's, he's, uh, he's, he's a great resource and a great, a great, a great, a great, uh, employee for the village to have and, uh, we always make sure that he's concerned, his concerns about emergency vehicle access and ability to fight fires are met.
Any other questions, comments?
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, Alex.
At the time that lots one and two are developed as resi, for residential use, assuming all the buildings there would have to be taken down.
I'm certain.
How does the reserve area function as? how does the reserve area function as farmland in that scenario, when there's no buildings to support an agriculture use?
Because there's so many farm spaces, so many ag reserves have, don't have a building near them. They're just planted with roo crops. I mean, if you try, again, drive down Scuttle Hole Road, and you'll see plenty of ag open space, it doesn't have a building on it. Most of the farmland inside the park doesn't have a building on it. There we go. So it's not, ag reserve doesn't have to have buildings on it, the farms and farms and row crops.
But could it if they needed that to, could it have buildings on it if they needed that to continue the farm operations?
And here's the, and here's the rub. That's gonna be a negotiation, that's gonna be what you guys feel comfortable with. So, for example, most ag reserves say that you can have agricultural buildings and structures on them. I will tell you that I think it was not smart of the town, but, you know, they, it's a learning process. They did nothing in there to limit the size of them. And that's the sort of conversation that we welcome with you. And it would have to be, it would have to be, you'd have to have language in there that said it was a barn or something like that, it had to be used for an agricultural use. Before the town tightened up some of that stuff, many of those barns got used for a lot of, a lot of toys. Typically, when there are ag buildings on ag reserves, they define a specific area of them. They define a specific area of them. Or we could have a conversation as to whether that you're comfortable. At all with that. Because some, some subdivision could approve and no buildings allowed in there. I mean, that's part of, part of, we're all ears on that. I mean, we've, we've been doing a lot of these subdivisions of agricultural reserves over the years. We're very familiar with the, you know, the points that get checked off and have to get, you know, made very, very clear in the agricultural reserve document.
Understood, thank you. Well, what would you like from us?
We'd like you to approve this through sketch plan approval, so that we can go to the health department. And a sketch, you know, that doesn't mean that, as far, a sketch plan approval is just a sketch plan approval. It talks about the number of lots, it talks about the general density and stuff like that. It's, and the configuration. It's not, it's not a final approval.
I have to interject there, if I may.
Yep, Willa.
Because you've argued in several cases in front of us that the sketch plan is absolutely binding, and that you would go into court, and I think you are possibly in an ongoing case arguing that the sketch plan approval is binding forever after, and the board, and it's written in stone. So we can't, we, you've absolutely argued that, but we can't have it both ways. Unless, unless the board is...
Okay, sorry.
We absolutely had that argument, and you also said you were going to argue that in the previous case. And it's been reiterated here, so it's important to be clear, you know, that that is sometimes the position taken. And so the sketch plan should not be approved unless, you know, we're all on board with it. The idea that it's written in stone is what you've argued.
Again, if I may respond.
Yes.
I'm very, very specific in the things that I say, and I remember what I said in the case that you were talking about, what I was saying. And it was reasoning, you as the sole dissenting member on the vote not to approve, was saying that the zoning board of appeals had established the lot sizes, and that you couldn't change the density or the configuration of the lots in that case. I did argue that I thought it was rather strange that I had met all the conditions of the sketch plan approval, including approvals from other boards. But, you know, I didn't say that they were binding. I said, what, I said because of the zoning board of appeals decision it was binding. Sketch plan approval is just that, sketch plan approval, which is why you have a final approval. Obviously, things get changed between sketch plan approval and final approval. This just lets me go to the, the planning board, I mean, excuse me, the health department. They can start working out the engineering.
John, any...
So are we discussing, not to split hairs, but sketch plan versus preliminary plat?
Well, this, this could not be a preliminary plat, because this is not a survey. This is prepared by my office for planners, for surveyors. And typically, sketch plan approval goes on a design like this, and then it gets transferred over to a survey for a final, formal... Kathy, we talked about bringing this to the whole major, sketch plan preliminary, final. I will tell you, I will, I meant, there are legions of case law. I will tell you this, though, that say that once you've received preliminary approval, you have to have something significant to change the final plat significantly. We're not asking you for preliminary approval. And again, this is not to talk about that situation that's in litigation now. It was a minor subdivision. There is no preliminary step in the village code. You go from sketch plan to final. This is sketch plan, preliminary, and then final. And again, I'm just cards out on the table. A final approval gets you some rights.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, a preliminary approval gets you some rights, but a sketch plan is what...
That is, that is correct. That's a...
Yeah, understood.
A good synopsis of the village code. And I think to summarize where we are here is that we have a plan which is generally conforming to the zoning. What we are looking at is from a planning perspective, from, from our principles of is, do these lots create any issues of health, safety, and welfare? Are they of a good design? Do they create any issues of obnoxiousness or distractions or ill effect on neighboring properties? What we're looking at right now is, are we comfortable with the design, and are we comfortable with the layout?
Yeah. I, look, there, there was a lot of direct feedback in the form of questions, I think, given to you tonight. What I would like to propose, open for discussion, is that you take some of that feedback back to the applicant and get their reaction. And that gives us time to get further up the speed and consult with Kathy and Alex and John on this. I fully appreciate that you are trying to get, move forward with this and get to the health department. But what I am proposing, if I can, is that we, you go back, we go back, everybody talks about this or thinks about it, you talk to, with your applicant about this, and then we put this on the next meeting's agenda for the vote that you're proposing. So that's, you know, back in two weeks for a vote.
Quick question, are the flag lots legal? Are they the length? Because that was raised, but I don't, I didn't think we had gotten the answer. Are they, are they less than five hundred?
That, so that is one of the questions that I'd like to pin down very clearly. So there are some things on the table that we need to clarify.
Well, just to, to frame things, as Mr. Bennett pointed out, that is a section of the code. But there are provisions in the code where the planning board can waive or change such things if they so, so deem appropriate. I, from what I'm understanding, from listening to the board, I think that our concern, stop me, anyone if I'm wrong, are the design and the concept of the flag lots. I'm looking at ninety-seven thirty-eight E, limited number of flagpole lots may be permitted, provided they're well shaped, generally larger than the average sized lot. And their access way is essentially straight. So stop me if I'm, if I'm astray, but is our concern that the flag lots are long and kind of bendy?
I, I think the concern is just that we've required other applicants to adhere to the flag lot requirements. So if we depart from that, you know, what's the rationale for departing from that?
Well, we gave it to you.
Well, I think the rationale is, again, we're, we're looking at the, the design, and is this a better design than jamming twelve lots in here, than putting everything up against the streets rather than having flag lots? That's the overall concept.
Yeah, thank you, John. If I may, just say one, one thing. I agree with that assessment. I think what I heard tonight were two primary concerns. One is the location of the reserve area, right? And we heard a lot of good feedback on that, but I think that's a concern. And the other was the location and design of the flags, you know. And I, I think that's somewhat technical, and we want to get, do a little bit more work on what exactly...
Well, I suggested two roads out to Wickapog with the idea that they would be legal length. Are those two...
That's, all the flags are under consideration.
Yeah, no, I was wondering if the two that were added, because we didn't have Nelson Pope input on that, were the two that were added, you know, the code, are they under the code requirement? Are they, do they meet the code requirement, the village code requirement?
And Rich, sorry to interrupt, not, not to address that right now, but I think those are questions that for the next time that this is on, that we ought to have clear, yeah, John, go ahead. Rich, you go first, okay.
We have sixty feet here, sixty, twenty, forty, sixty feet.
Yep.
A road requires fifty feet.
Yep.
So if you're gonna do, you're actually gonna put a paved road coming in here. You can do this as a paved road, and coming down here, put a cul-de-sac somewhere for fifty feet. We've got sixty feet within which to wiggle a common driveway. So could we make these twenty-five feet and take another fifteen feet out of the ag reserve? But the driveway that's gonna go in, it's gonna be the same width as it's gonna be if you had another fif, lose another fifteen feet of ag reserve. So I don't really see the purpose of that, when you've got sixty feet to wiggle a common driveway through that. And this is a, this is a cluster subdivision, so you have the absolute right to reduce the flags, the legal feet, flags, from what they are. There's a subdivision, it's a clustered subdivision. Half of it's on Sagponic Row, and the other half is on Sagponic Main that I did seven years ago for, for, what was it, the German guy, the French guy? In any event, there, there is an access point of, there's a twenty foot, there's a twenty foot easement that existed. And to get to these lots down here, we created the flags at five feet, because we knew we had forty feet to work with, and the common driveway went down through there. So you have the absolute right, under the cluster powers, under the state code, to waive those. And really, what you have is an opportunity to create a bejouring sort of, you know, common driveway, built in whatever way both the fire matics people and the planning board want to create safe, adequate access in a way that I think is superior to a subdivision road.
Yep.
I was talking about the lots that empty on Wickapog, not the others.
Excuse me?
The lot, the two lots that are now emptying on Wickapog have flagpole, right?
Yes, so the lot number three contains frontage from here to here. So it owns all of that, if there's illegal access. And then there's another twenty foot flag strip that goes into lot number four. So the driveway would come into here, because this area is burdened by easement benefiting this person, because they constructed something on their property, and because the Fowler's are nice people, they gave them easement over top of their property, or somebody built something on top. And so the driveway is going to come down through here and run within this area, which I believe is about thirty-five feet.
So those are within, they're not long.
No, no, no. The length of that is...
Is there any possibility, I don't know if it would be anywhere legal or not, and I might be splitting hairs between the phrase like private road versus easement, that just one straight private road could be taken from Wickapog to the head or the easterly side of those lots, just one straight right of way?
Well, I think you tried a bit on the road coming down through here.
Yeah, essentially. Again, I don't know if, if a private road could be feasibly done there.
I mean, you call, whether you call it a private road or a public road, it has to, if it's a road, it has to be designed to village specifications. That's what we're trying to avoid. And we build it times subdivisions completely. I mean, we're really trying to avoid that.
Yeah, that's clear, you're trying to avoid roads. Yep.
Well, we're trying to avoid roads, because we don't want to see them implemented until sometime somebody called a builder or a homeowner house, which may be ten years ago.
Understood.
Number one. And number two, physically, we can do the same thing. Exactly what we've done across the park.
Yep.
I mean, if you, if you approve it, and you say you have to have roads there, the roads have to be either built, have to be built, Bill McNamara's file, have to be built.
Understood.
So we can't, that whole scheme of doing what was done down in the Halsey subdivision goes away.
Well, I thought, I, I could be wrong in this, because I'm thinking of a village, or a town, I'm sorry, a project in the town. And I can't obviously, honestly recall if they were private roads or if they were just common driveways in which there was a covenant restriction that they didn't have to be opened or even gravelled for, for access until the lots had been sold and until a building permit had been...
That's a typical common driveway agreement in the town of Southampton. Yeah. The whole, like, it got messy, because you had these common driveway agreements, and then who was gonna build a common driveway? So what, what those requirements now are, is they create the common driveway, but it's before a building permit can be issued on, on any of them, someone has to put, has to put the thing in. And that's the enforcement mechanism.
Yeah. Look, we, we certainly want to be a user-friendly planning board, but I, I'd really like to adjourn this one to our next meeting, to give everybody some time to think about all that was discussed. Everybody good with that?
You guys good with that?
Yeah. Were we gonna walk the property, or no one's interested?
Just from my perspective, as, as a guy who worked on this since two thousand and six, it feels a little bit like no good deed goes unpunished. Just so you know, that, that's kind of where, what it feels like. So we've worked very hard to try to, we have to work with you, we know that, but we've worked very hard to try to...
Richard, I wish you didn't feel that way, but, you know, I understand why, after twenty years, you might have that feeling.
Well, I would say, having come to it just in the last year and a half, I would say, having, this is a, this is a massive voluntary reduction of density. The family's been here forever. And that does mean something in terms of the, you know, good citizens of this community.
Yeah, that has not been lost on the board. Can we get a motion to adjourn this until our next meeting? Right?
What was the next thing?
What is the next thing?
Yeah.
We did the minutes, all right.
We did the minutes.
Yeah, we did the minutes. A motion to adjourn at the next meeting?
October second?
All in, yeah, second, all in favor. Aye.
Do you have any final questions, concerns before, are we all on the same page?
I don't think we're all on the same page, in terms of where the open space is living. And I'm not terribly confident that there's gonna be a different change of position, but we'll take it back to mine. I don't, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to me. I think we know, we've heard everything.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's all you can ask, that's all I can ask for now.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. Any other business? Anyone?
Just a reminder that we have the Escova municipal training is October tenth. So if you haven't let Tajay in our office know whether you'd like to attend, she's gonna be handling the registration.
I would like to attend. Can this serve as official notice?
Let me shoot her an email before I forget.
Okay. Anyone else want to do that? That's, the four hours of training all in one?
I'm already signed up.
Okay, good. All in one shot in Riverhead.
Yeah, maybe we'll commute.
Because you get it all done, and you get free dinner.
Exactly.
The, the village, I think, is hovering. Free dinner on the village, I guess.
Dinner on the village, I should say, for the record. Motion to adjourn, or motion to close the meeting.
Did we address eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings and twenty-three county road thirty-nine, aye?
No one here?
Yeah, those, I think we had no new submissions on those, so if we could adjourn those.
Should we put those over also?
We're gonna put those, let's motion to put those over to November sixth.
November, I think...
Is that the date, November, that November meeting?
Um, no, it's November second, and then November sixteenth.
Let's do...
No, no, sorry, October second. October second is the next meeting.
I want to push, I think we should, I mean...
October two.
I know that, on some of them, they're working on revised submissions. I'm not, I'm not sure when we'll have those yet.
I, I would suggest we go to the sixteenth on those, right, because we're just gonna end up pushing, October sixteenth or the meeting after that. The next meeting would be November sixth. I'd also adjourn them until then.
The sixth, I'm back.
November, a motion to adjourn those two items until November sixth meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now a motion to, if there's no other business, a motion to close our meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.